Any legislator who wants to ask a question will have three minutes. And again, when you ask the question, it's for the question and the answer. So please leave time if you're asking. Begin, and just, you know, I just want to reiterate, because this is the first public group. Your testimony was received, was distributed to all the members a couple of days ago. Everybody has it. Keep an eye on the clock. Three minutes goes pretty fast, particularly if you start to read and not just hit the highlights of your testimony. So, yes, if you can begin.
Thank you. My name is Dustin Zarney. I'm the Democratic Caucus Chair for the New York State Elections Commissioner Association. But I'm here today on behalf of the entire association as we have quite a bit of agreement from our Republican and Democratic Caucuses on funding that is vitally needed for county boards of elections, which was left out of the governor's budget. We are asking today for $10 million in capital funding and $10 million in aid to localities. And the reason we are asking that is it's a similar level of investment that this body made in 2019 when we converted over to the early voting and electronic poll books. The capital funding that we are asking for is needed because we are getting next-generation precinct scanners, or the scanners that are in the polling places. These are coming online over the next year. The New York State Board of Elections will be certifying new precinct scanners, and we, many counties do not have the funds to be able to purchase this. And many of our scanners in our election polling places are up to 15 years old. So it is time to move on to the next generation and serve our voters better. Also, our electronic poll books now are getting to be four to five years old. These iPads usually have a shelf life of about five to seven years. So over the next few years, we're going to have to start replacing those PollPads as well. The aid to locality funding would go to help us staff up our polling, our boards of elections offices to be able to deal with the upcoming presidential election and also the new reforms that this body has put in place, specifically the 10-day registration. New deadline is going to be an enormous hurdle for us to meet, and we can do so with properly-trained, full-time staff. And aid to locality funding will help minimize some of the burden that the minimum staffing bill that was passed by the Senate, that I hope will be passed by the Assembly, and full-time commissioners that are vitally needed in these counties. And finally, I want to wrap this up with saying that New York State is, the reason I always come before here every year and ask for money, is New York State is one of the few states that does not provide annual funding to cover their elections. I believe it's less than 20, maybe it's less than 15 states now, that New York is one of, that don't provide any dedicated money to their county boards of elections. This money is needed because we run your elections as well. We run state Supreme Court elections. We run ballot props. And we need to look at, start having annual funding to offset those costs. Thank you. That's my time.
Thank you. Yes?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of funding the Public Campaign Finance Program, otherwise known as the PCFP. My name is Karen Wharton, and I facilitate the Fair Elections for New York Coalition. And I'm very happy to say that I'm also a constituent of Chairperson Weinstein. In 2020, we successfully advocated for the passage of the country's most significant finance reform law since the Supreme Court's 2010 decision in Citizens United. This created the PCFP that allows candidates to run for office without relying on the power of big-money donors at any stage. The program is voluntary and allows legislative and statewide candidates who opt in and who meet all the requirements to receive a multiple match on small contributions they raise from their constituents. Lawmakers of diverse backgrounds have already initiated the process of opting in. This program is needed and must be fully funded this year. Big money dominates campaign financing. In 2022, the 200 biggest donors in New York gave almost $16 million to state candidates. They gave more than 200,000 of the state's smaller donors, who gave $250 or less. So, if money talks, 200 people have a greater voice in our elections than 200,000. That is not democracy. That's a rigged system. People's impression is that the influence of the rich and the big corporations is silencing ordinary voices. They see this in the many newly constructed apartments, apartment buildings, partly subsidized by public dollars, but with rents that are just too damn high. The perception is that pay-to-play is rampant and that our votes don't count. Democracy includes voting, determining who is on the ballot, how resources are allocated and to whom. The PCFP gives regular folks a significant say in who is on the ballot because it reforms how campaigns are financed. People can now give small donations to their candidates of choice and have it be worth as much as the big donors. Programs like the NYIC in New York City and Connecticut prove that more people participate in our democracy as small donors under these systems. They feel more connected and engaged with their local representatives. Now, President Johnson signed the 1964 Civil Rights Bill because it was the right thing to do. So I call on you to do the right thing today for our state, our democracy, by funding this program. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairs Weinstein and Kruger and members of this legislature. My name is Marina Pino, and I am counsel at the Brennan Center for Justice. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in support of funding for a democracy's infrastructure in this budget. We commend this body for championing crucial democracy reforms. You have made New York a leader in fighting race-based voter suppression and provided a blueprint for campaign finance reform nationwide. With its launch last November, the state's groundbreaking new small donor public financing program is the best solution this country has ever seen to counter the damage that Citizens United has done to our democracy. Thanks to your leadership, candidates have begun opting into this voluntary program. The time is now to send a clear message of reaffirmed steadfast support for reducing the outsized influence of wealth in our elections by adequately funding this program. The executive budget admirably meets the Public Campaign Finance Board's request of $14.5 million for administrative needs, including a well-trained agency staff and software build-out cost, all of which will set the program on a strong foundation heading into the 2024 elections. However, more resources are in need for adequate public matching funds. The governor's proposed $25 million is a start, but we urge you to go farther. This investment will give prospective participants and voters who wish to engage as small donors greater confidence in this program and will help realize its promise to empower a greater diversity of New Yorkers as donors and meaningfully bring more constituents' voices into our politics. A recent data analysis shows that in legislative elections, the program could have increased the financial power of small donors sixfold, from 11% of all donations in 2022 to 67%. This increase is entirely due to small donors who reside in each candidate's legislative district. Public financing, together with this legislature's other enacted voting reforms, puts the state at the forefront of expanding voter participation and strengthening everyday New Yorkers' trust in their elected government. Last year, New York emerged as a national leader in restoring legal protections against race-based voter discrimination through the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Act of New York. This legislature must ensure that the final budget includes $5 million for enforcing this law, as well as voting and elections database needed to realize the act's full promise. And the final budget must include designated funds to support reforms you have advanced to reduce barriers to voter registration. To fully deliver all these reforms, this legislature must also prioritize strengthening and funding election administration across the state. We support the bipartisan requests from local election officials for more state funding. Along with these resources, we urge you to enact legislation to bring national best practices in our state's election administration. Thank you for your continued efforts to boost our state's democracy. The Brennan Center is ready to be of service, and I would be glad to answer any of the questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you all. We have a few members with questions. We go first to Assemblywoman Walker.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony today. So, a few questions. What do you believe with respect to poll worker training? Do you believe that there's an appetite for having local training at the local board of election levels?
Yes, in fact, that is how most poll workers are trained, at the local board of elections' levels. We have worked as an association to share best practices among the county boards, and a lot of the training has been somewhat standardized based on the electronic poll books that we brought in in 2019. There's three different vendors, so we can't have a one-size-fit-all training, but the electronic poll books have changed the way we've done election inspector training, and so it has to be done at the county level.
Awesome. For the New York State Public Campaign Finance Program, since its implementation, are you aware as to how many candidates may have applied to participate in the program?
Yes, I am Assemblymember. To date, there have been about 15, maybe 16, members who have opened the PCFP authorized account and therefore indicated their intent to opt in, or at least they've taken the first step.
And in your estimation, I know you were in your testimony, but how much funding do you believe would be necessary for us to, needed in order to keep the program in place?
So, there are two components. There is the administrative cost, what keeps the program actually running, and there is the matching fund for future payouts. And the board, the agency responsible for this program, has asked for $14.5 million in the budget this year for administrative costs. So that includes hiring personnel to work with candidates, to iron out any issues, as well as bringing in, building out their technology, the infrastructure to support this program. And then there is the second component, the second part, which is the matching funds for future payouts, and that is $100 million that the board has asked for.
Okay. And also with respect to my last, I'll combine the two questions. With respect to the John Lewis Voting Rights Act, are you aware of whether or not the Attorney General has also made the request for the $5 million that you mentioned in your testimony? And since I wasn't here for the beginning of this hearing, do you think that election fraud should be bail-eligible? Back to Joe. You can get back to me with your response.
I'm happy to supplement in writing the response to your question, Assemblywoman Walker.
And when you do that, please share with myself, Senator Kruger, so we can share with all of the members who are participating.
Awesome. Thank you.
We go to the Senate?
Thank you, Senator Rachel May.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Two questions I have. One is about early voting. It's several years of it. What reforms would you like to see to boost participation and make it more effective?
Well, I'm wearing two hats today. As the Democratic Caucus Chair and representing the association as a whole, the Democratic Caucus is very much in favor of early voting, has been, and in favor of other reforms like the portable polling place bill that you have put forward and has passed the Senate twice now, which will give us some flexibility. One of the things that we are also asking for changes as a bipartisan association is to not have early voting limited to cities. First, there's the, the rule is that you have to put it in your highest locality city. We have asked for that to be a 10,000 or more voter, because many counties, especially smaller counties, I use Herkimer as an example, has Little Falls, which has like 4,300 voters in it, and they have to put their early voting center in it when it really doesn't help the county as a whole. So we ask for a limit on that. So that, those are some of the reforms that we're advocating for.
Thank you. And then I'm happy to hear you talk about campaign finance reform and really pleased to start running in that system. There is a proposal to consolidate elections into even years, and I'm wondering if any of you can talk about how that would boost participation or save costs.
So, I think that, I think this is, it's a worthy proposal, worthy of continuing discussion on moving the elections to even years. I get a little worried about ballot length. I do get a little worried about drop-off of races from the top to the bottom if everything is on every two years. And I do know that there's constitutional issues with cities and county constitutional offices and Supreme Court and justice judicial contacts. So we will always have an election every year. It's just the number of people in different elections. I would love to see a transition of especially some of the more populous races like county legislatures or county executives, clerks, these kind of things that could maybe benefit from even-year elections as opposed to odd-year elections without having to deal with the constitutional issues of transferring cities and other things.
Thanks. I think I'm going to try to cut off at seven minutes because I think I only had three minutes.
Right. If anyone else. She's fabulous, but she also only gets three minutes.
Three minutes. We're in the three-minute public session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Rachel.
We have Assemblyman Jacobson, three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good to see the Commissioners here last year. I don't think the other two were, but good to see you this year. We have made significant and long overdue election reforms since 2019, but implementing these changes does not happen by itself. I represent parts of three counties, Orange, Dutchess, and Ulster. Each of the counties I represent have had to hire additional workers, particularly for the programs for correcting absentee ballots, for counting the absentee ballots prior to the election, for the additional, and for the additional early voting sites. Also, there's been a need to upgrade the equipment. On-demand printers are great. It avoids errors, but the printers are worn out. Same thing with the scanners, the ones that count the votes. We have problems that they're getting older, and we need new ones. The software is much better. I've proposed an additional $20 million of additional money in the state budget, $10 million for personnel, $10 million for equipment. It would be distributed, as in the past, according to the enrollment in each of the counties. And I'd like to know what you think of that as a proposal and whether it makes sense. Obviously, we'd always like more, but I'd like to hear.
I, this is our, it mirrors our proposal as well, so I think it's a great proposal. But, and it is absolutely needed. We are at a time where our equipment is starting to fail. These precinct scanners have a life of about 10 years. Some of them are 15 years old now. Some of them are getting, even the ones that were replaced a few years ago, they're starting to get to the end of their useful life. And the new scanners at the polling place level will make it better for the voters because they can accept the ballots quicker, read them faster, and allow lines to move through. The on-demand printers save money on ballot costs. They're green because we're not printing up ballots that are unused because we have to guess how many ballots are going to be used. And before the on-demand printers, we would have to...
Have you found this in all the counties, a need for more workers, a need for more equipment?
Absolutely. It's a resounding chorus from our Commissioners that we need more workers and we need capital funding.
And I've only got 20 seconds. I mean, you guys can chime in also. I'm not trying to. I have two bills to reform the board of elections. One is a 919, that would make all Commissioners full-time, and the other, a 111, which would allow applications for absentee ballots delivered on the day of Election Day. Right now, you have to go to court. I want to know how you feel about that.
So they can, they can respond, since it's not part of the budget now, they can respond to those questions afterwards?
I have five other bills, but I didn't try.
We are going to go to the Senate now, Mr. Jacobson.
Senator Walzak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've been joined by Senators Martins, Rollison, and Rhodes as well. Yeah, no problem. Happy to be. Dustin, how important is it to have bipartisan, to keep the bipartisan nature of board of elections?
I think it's vital. It is what we've built the bedrock of our electoral system on, and I believe that some of the failures that have come about, and I got to say that they've been fewer and fewer failures as we've gone about, is resources. We need resources. It's not about the bipartisan structure. But what the bipartisan structure does is it provides confidence to the voters and confidence that the correct work is going in to determine the winner and believe the results of the elections. I had a race that had 10 votes decided. Senator Manion won that race, but no one questioned the outcome of it because bipartisan workers were there at every step.
Should party chairs be able to also serve as Commissioners of board of elections?
So, our association doesn't have a standing on this, so I'm going to give my personal opinion. I don't believe so. I would never want to do that myself. It's really hard to do that when there's primaries, to be able to serve as a party chair, which is delegating candidates, and then also a Commissioner that should be there for all candidates.
Should elections Commissioners be full-time across the state?
I do believe that.
Even in a county like Hamilton County, where there's only 4,600 registered voters?
Even in a county like Hamilton County, because we have an expanded calendar, which requires a lot of voter registration, and in those counties, there are smaller amounts of workers as well, and the full-time Commissioners in those smaller counties are actually doing voter registration and some of the other work that is needed. You need a Commissioner there to make decisions year-round. We have an expanded calendar, and we need full-time Commissioners there.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. So on, this is more to the panel. I know you had some testimony on public campaign finance. So Lieutenant Governor Benjamin was indicted on campaign finance bribery scheme. What should this legislature be putting forward and what funding should the governor be considering in this budget to prevent such egregious abuse of taxpayer money in the future?
So, this program is the strongest response we have to outside spending and the grip that wealthy donors have on our elections. These funds are necessary right now for candidates, voters, and small donors who wish to engage as such, to trust that this program is going to...
I'm not talking about the funds. I'm talking about what policy should we be considering to make sure that those funds aren't abused the way that Lieutenant Governor Benjamin abused them?
Thank you, Senator. So, this, there are safeguards built into the program to ensure that, and this also goes back to funding, when we talk about administrative funds, the $14.5 million, this is to ensure that there is a strong, well-trained agency staff, which would include candidate liaisons, to work with candidates throughout the election cycle to ensure that they are in compliance throughout the entire program.
May I chime in?
I'm sorry, the time is up.
Okay.
Assembly.
I do not believe at this time we have any further Assemblymembers.
We have another Senator, Senator Rollison. Oh, excuse me. I apologize. Rollison Rhodes, not you, Senator, Senator Rhodes.
Thank you, Chairman, Chair One. Sorry. With respect to voter identification, free voter ID, why would that be or not be a good idea?
So, Senator, the Democratic Caucus would oppose voter ID. The Republican Caucus and Commissioners support voter ID.
But what's the rationale, if you don't mind my asking? What's the rationale behind it? What's wrong with having somebody establish who they are when they go to vote?
So voter ID, as implemented throughout New York State, has shown, I'm sorry, throughout the United States, has shown a harmful, you know, product to voters of elderly that may not have the correct voter ID, and also college-age voters that may not have the correct voter ID. We've seen it implemented in a way that is harmful and prejudicial to certain types of voters. We see in Texas where they allow a gun license for voter ID, but not a student ID issued by the state. It's also a cost problem as well.
If I can ask, when we actually pass legislation, we have the ability to control what the criteria are. So in theory, what's the downside?
There's also usually a cost prohibition. You know, driver's license will cost up to $100 to get...
What if it's free?
What if is a big question and is usually not. And so, and also, we do have a tremendous amount of data showing that there is very little voter fraud, infinitesimal voter fraud. The amount of money that would be spent to implement this type of voter ID legislation would be harmful, it would be onerous, and it would not actually have any real benefit to the system that is already in place. The signature checks, the bipartisan checks of elections Commissioners have proven over time to be very, it worked very well in New York. We have little voter fraud, and I don't see the need for it.
Two years ago, I had a dead person vote in my ED.
They, I'm sorry, so the dead person showed, I'm sorry, which, who voted in your ID, a dead person?
This was in Nassau County.
Okay. And was that an absentee ballot?
What's that?
Was that an absentee ballot?
It was.
So voter ID would not actually help that particular situation, since in-person voter ID would not have helped that.
But we can't say there isn't fraud. We may disagree as to the volume of it, but...
I said, I said, I said a low amount. I never said it was perfect. No system designed by humans is perfect.
If I can, because time is limited. You spoke about concerns about ballot length, yet seemed to suggest that you think that moving town and county elections to even number years somehow is a good idea. When you have an election for town supervisor, town clerk, receiver of taxes, councilman, county legislature, county clerk, county executive, how does that, how does that not create a concern for you with respect to length of ballot and overshadowing issues that come up in local town and county elections?
The time is up. I'll happily provide a written response to you on that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Assembly. Oh, we're going to continue. I'm sorry. Okay. We also have Senator Martins, who's joined us. Oh, there you are. I knew you were somewhere.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you, it's helpful to say. I'm going to follow up on that last question. So, I come from the government. I served in the village government years ago in the 20th century, and I have a concern that all of the elections will be evened out this year. And I speak from my colleagues in government, whether it be county or town, that sometimes there are issues that are specific to the town, to counties, to localities, that would be overwhelmed perhaps by national issues or statewide issues, and therefore not get the attention that they necessarily need as a concern. Can you give me your thoughts on whether that would probably not be a good idea, or where you would draw that line, the moving elections are evened out? I have your opinion.
So I want to be clear, the association as a whole has not made a recommendation. So my thoughts here are my personal thoughts on this. However, I did say that it's worthy of discussion. I'm not saying that I'm for all of this. However, I hear this same argument when it comes to moving village elections to November. A lot of villages use that same argument. And in my county, we've had five villages move their elections to November, and that doesn't seem to happen. They are still making choices. In fact, it's increased competition, and it's also increased activism at the village level. So I do not believe that more voters voting will actually overwhelm them. In fact, I think it has a beneficial benefit, that if more people are actually choosing our government officials, it reflects the voting populace as a whole, and we have better governance. government as a whole.
I appreciate the context. My experience has been quite often, that when you do have local voters voting, you deal with mainstream issues, not necessarily with nationally, and speaking of localities may be important to those localities, so that villages, rural areas, people are fully involved locally. But I wanted to ask, you know, there is a tremendous amount of fall of voter activity when it comes to elections. I find, for example, being Nassau County, where I tell some, that there are, in the central area, for example, having a higher percentage of voter turnout, perhaps you can show our district to me, for example, I have a quality Nassau moving quarter, perhaps you can give me an idea of why there is that significant dramatic drop-off on the clean side of that line than there is on the Nassau side.
Well, I'm not from that area, so I can't speak to the local issues, but I do think ballot drop-off is an issue inside of a ballot itself as well, it's starting from the top of the ticket down.
That's not ballot drop-off, the reduction in the number of people actually voting on the city side of the ballot, as opposed to...
I will have to get you that, I promise I will.
Thank you.
We do have Assemblyman Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairman, Chairwoman. To continue what the two Senators were addressing about the voting issues, are you aware that most villages do not run under party lines, Republican, Democrat, or Independent? Putting them in the same year would force them to fall into what exact category? The nothing party? Where would they fit on the ballot line?
I'm glad you asked that question, because the five villages in Onodogee County that moved to November, four of them do not run on partisan elections as well. They fit on the ballot, we have plenty of space now that we don't have, a ton of recognized parties, and they saw way more participation, even though they weren't in the partisan categories, they had their own ballot lines, independent nominating conditions, and they had a ton of participation, and they did not get forced into partisan elections.
Would you agree that there's a possibility, for example, I'm still the deputy mayor in my village, I have a Democrat on my board, I happen to be a Republican. We work to serve the community. What if someone just assumes that we're all Republican or Democrat, and that skews their opinion of the fairness of how an election should be run?
I, so I don't believe inherently being a Democrat or Republican is bad. In fact, I think it's pretty good, and I think having party identification helps the voters make choices. I also don't believe that they have to be in the party as well. Having more choice, having more participation is where I always tend to land, and I believe in village elections and in local elections, you can have a balance without, and I don't believe just the time of the election will change that, and having more people participate is always better.
May I ask you one last question?
Sure.
With the exception of saving the Board of Elections' time, or having to spend another couple weeks arranging this, what would be the benefit of moving it, moving the days?
Oh, it's only one minute. Okay, yes, if you move village elections to November, it's actually a 100% cost savings to the village itself, and it's actually way better a use of taxpayer money, because we are already holding elections every year. So, if, when we move these five villages to November, they saved 100% of their cost, because the Board of Elections was already running elections, and it was really no added burden to us.
It seems like we're in agreement, we should leave it up to the villages to decide their own budgets, which since they do that anyway, to decide if they want to have their cost savings. I thank you all for that enlightened opinion.
I would, I'd say the question is worthy of discussion, and I think having that is a good discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Senator, if you have anybody?
Thank you, I think there is me left. Hi. So I'd like to follow up on my colleague's question about fraud in campaign finance, and what the research shows us about which models actually end up with bigger or lesser problems. I guess I'll admit, there are always problems, somebody's always going to try to break the law, and hopefully we catch them when they break the law. But what's your experience, I think it was Brennan Center who had done research, no, I'm sorry, it was you, either one, on research on what we've learned from around the country about the different models of campaign contributions and people violating the law?
So, thank you for that question. What I'd like to say is that a New York City program worked. It worked very well, because it catches, or it caught, someone that it presumed was making like an infraction. So I don't see the fact that someone was caught, or was accused of fraud, right, as being a problem. I think it indicates how, what a wonderful system they have there. And I know that the Public Campaign Finance Board has been speaking with the New York City Campaign Finance Board to learn about best practices. So I think that the example was actually a very good one in terms of what Campaign Finance Board can actually do to protect taxpayers' dollars. Now, with respect to what studies have shown, I would have to ask, refer to the Brennan Center for that, but thank you for bringing that question back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, and I'm happy to submit to the entire committee here our reports on this issue. I will say that, you know, public financing is working across the country. There are 15, at least 15 states and 21 municipalities who have been using public financing programs to help boost and empower a greater diversity of constituents, and meaningfully bring their voices into our democracy, and I'm happy to supplement with those, with that research as well.
Thank you both. I think it would be very interesting if you could get it to, Helene and I, we will get it to everybody on the committees, thank you. I'm going to cede back my 32 seconds, thank you.
And we have Assemblyman Mankulow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I saw, I'm sorry for the last-minute question, but, you know, we sit up here and we talk about millions and millions and billions of dollars, and yesterday in my office, I had two, two women there with children of special needs, and their concern is daycare. They don't have enough daycare in Rochester. So we're looking at public financing. So we have public financing here, we need families that need daycare here. If I have to choose between one or the other, which one do I choose?
Thank you so much for that question. I actually love it. You don't have to choose. You do not have to choose. Basically, there are a couple of things going on here, and when we look at democracy, the people of New York are paying for the lights to be on, they're paying for this building, they're spending money, they're paying your salaries, all of that. So it's an investment, right? The only part, the only point in the diversity process where we're left out is in the public campaign finance side, right? Where we have ceded that portion of democracy to wealthy folks, right? Now, I believe, I believe that the discussion that you're having with your constituents, that the public campaign finance system, if people were more involved in the system, we probably wouldn't have to be making these kinds of choices, right? Because we would be electing folks who would be here from the get-go advocating for those programs to be implemented, so thank you.
I appreciate that answer, just one question. So, just really quick, I only have one minute left. So if I was to ask that same question to those two women that were in my office, what answer do you think they would give me?
I am thinking that they would probably say, give me my program, right? Let's be honest, they'll say, give me my program, they probably don't know anything about public campaign finance.
That's my point.
Yes.
Most people do not know about public financing of campaigns yet, and when they see that come out, there's going to be grave concern. Are we doing anything to educate the public on public financing of campaigns?
Actually, thank you, because that is where the budget comes in. We need you to fund the program, to fund the administrative cost fully, right, so that the Board can actually embark on an education campaign.
So part of that financing would make sure we contact the residents of New York State to let them know that they're contributing to public finance?
That, yes, that it is, we're utilizing public dollars for public good.
All right, I appreciate, and it was a tough question, but I was thinking about those two ladies, and it really bothered me, you know, what do I tell them? So thank you for your testimony, both, thank you.
Thank you. I think there are no more Senators.
And no more Assembly Members, so thank you, and just a reminder, there are a couple times, a couple of questions you need to send us answers to, just remember to send them to the two Chairs, and we'll make sure all Members receive them.
Thank you for your service to voters.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
So now we go to Panel E, which is our last panel, Nassau County Village Officials Association, Riders Alliance, and Immigrant ARC.